Well, different there some.
I mean, we have. So we can hold the planning commission for the hearing. For uh from six thirty. We start with roll call.
Tonya Harrison.
Here.
Chris Bowlen, absent. Sarah Tremblay, absent. Mark Hall.
Here.
Chris Frany.
Here.
Gail Booty.
Here.
Sean Denadel.
Here.
That makes a quorum.
Okay. We are having this public hearing for the additional use permit for the marijuana establishment on lot two A, lot four, Cordova Industrial Park. And anyone who would speak at the moment here? They're not present here?
Yeah.
Yes.
And just state your name and address, and then you can um give your your comment.
Sterling Dale Bush. One one seven Bishopman Avenue, Cordova, Alaska. Um I object to the development of a marijuana store in Cordova at the industrial park, which is located at the entrance to our North Harbor, and which is located next to my daughter and son-in-law's family business, Cordova Outboard and Auto Parts. My grandchildren walk and ride their bikes to um their parents' workplace at Cordova Outboard to meet after school. And in the summer, um this is one of their safe places. I oppose the marijuana store because it has the potential to adversely affect public safety, health, and welfare of our community. The storefront which advertises and sells marijuana will send a message to our teens and youth that normalizes marijuana use. Thank you.
Hello, I guess I'll follow up. My name is Janet, and I am his stepdaughter. And so my husband and I operate, oh, Janet McManus, two O eight Ford Block Avenue, Cordova, Alaska. Uh my husband and I operate for the outboard out of the adjacent lots at two eleven Breakwater Avenue and three hundred Industry Way. Um so we write next door to Perples Business, and we operate in properties that wrap around everywhere as well. Our properties house people's livelihoods, and they contain two family homes as well. Um I do have concerns regarding the addition to the proposed marijuana establishment. I don't have a bunch of answers, but I just have a lot of questions, so I wanted to bring those to you guys today. Um I do hope that the city has time to revisit any of the notes that were taken, you know, and thoughts that had been proposed in the previous proposals. Um when there was an attempt to establish such a business in town before. Um and I hope that there's time to check all of those questions and see if anything's the same, if there's still problems with that. Um and to be sure to rule out all the previous reasons for dismissal as null and void before proceeding. Seems like that's a pretty understandable question. Um I specifically run there being concerns regarding ability to test the product properly and concerns regarding transportation through Cordova. Uh marijuana is still federally illegal, however, the product, how is the product's way to get to Cordova? Um does it need to be transported via federal waters or federal airspace? Have the regulations changed? Is the city at all viable federally for sanctioning a business that requires transportation through federal land and air waters? Um another concern with adding the pot shop is the local regulation as um as used is sure to increase, but the increased use comes increased instances for DUIs, minors in possession, minors using, and public use. And so that was just some concerns that I saw. Are there accepted means um for testing for impairment? Are there ones that are not going to be thrown out to a certain schedule which is projected in the court of law? Are there tools in place essentially to support our police officers and their guidance of that? Would the city shortly be finding themselves needing to hire another officer, another position that would negate the increased tax revenue perhaps? Ultimately, it's a city choice, and I appreciate having a chance to weigh in, and I hope that the consideration goes to unnecessary questioning. I hope that the city's interest in increased tax revenue doesn't overshadow the diligence it's due in adding something like that. I want the city to consider previous um taxable businesses that have been turned down in very recent history. And develop land on the new, the lot in Breakwater is like a prime example, what our thoughts are for that. Um. Businesses have been brought up, you know, ideas that would surely have more tax revenue, um and that would have brought more business opportunities to the community. Um so the next time an offer like that of those calibers comes to the table, I hope that we would be paying close attention to those sort of things. Um and if we're going to be picky with what we allow to this community, is this the time that we're going to give in because the times are tough? Those are my questions.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Glover, um five oh eight Third Street. I had some concerns about the proposed dispensary and the uh the liquor store that was being proposed on that spot. I know that tax revenue is one of the main drivers for the decision or maybe the temptation to allow that. I had some concerns that the impact that it might have on Cordova go beyond the dollars and cents of that. Given especially with the abundance of liquor stores and bars that already exist, that I fear that there's not going to be any increased tax revenue from one more. I don't know of anybody in Cordova who wants a drink but just can't figure out where to buy it. So we might be reshifting the cuts in that pie but not really growing it, so there's not really tax revenue to be gained there. And then when it comes to the dispensary, um I know that y'all are probably aware, but study upon study have shown that increased availability and especially um access to marijuana, even through dispensaries, increases the likelihood in communities of um drug-related hospitalizations, increased drug use and drug abuse among adults and adolescents, especially a- among young males that are in low-income communities or contexts, of which we have many here. And so I'm concerned about those that might be negatively impacted by having that kind of access liberalization of our policies and legalization and normalization of that. Um I've got some sheets that I'd love to pass to y'all that just have a couple of the mini-studies that have the citation, the abstract, and a QR code if you wanted to read more. But a one sheet that just kind of says what their results were that showed adverse reactions in communities whenever um dispensaries were opened in those, especially among young men and among young people. Given Cordova's past and current struggles with drug and alcohol use and abuse, I worry that building a dispensary in town could only exacerbate those issues and that any tax revenue that might be raised from it would end up being offset by increased costs to our community health, to our children's well-being, and um to increased policing costs with all of the associated um extra issues that that is sure to create down in the industrial park down there. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. I'll leave these here if y'all have any interest in that. There you go. Thank you very much.
My name is Charles Dayton, live at five twenty-four Second Street. I love Cordova. It's like, to me, it's like a mayor. There's an innocence about this city that I enjoy. Walk around, feel safe. And to me, if we're gonna have a pot shop, and I know it's legal, I know it's not legal federally, but if it's a drug that should be dispensed, it should be out of the pharmacy. If there's going to be something like that, it would be regulated, there would be no problems. But so if we need a pot shop, let's put it in the pharmacy. And um I'd just like to stand on most of it, and I would appreciate it if you wouldn't take the instance out of Cordova by putting in a pot shop. Thank you.
My name's Annette Deaton, other at five twenty-four Second Street. That was my husband. The proposed use of a pot shop in our community will adversely affect our idyllic town. It stinks. It draws vagrants, homeless people wandering our streets, which in turn can lead to stealing. Keep your vehicles and homes locked. While living in Alaska, Oklahoma allowed pot shops to be a part of their communities. When we returned to visit family and friends, there was a vast difference to what it had been, and not for the better. Litter was everywhere and everything seemed dirty, unhappy people walking around with a sense of depression. I don't want this to happen to our town. Let's set our community up for success. Allowing a pot shop to enter into our town is not a step towards success.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Fisher, another at six oh five Cedar Street. And my husband and I have the Alaska Power section behind Cordova Outboard, and also have an Cordova Outboard for several years. Recently turned over to Ernest and nephew, um Janet and Ryan. I I I can, I look at the proposal and I can appreciate everything going into the proposal. I mean, who doesn't want to see a better building down there? For sure, and I feel bad that the building has decayed to the extent that it has. Um so it is exciting to see new things being accepted into the community. But I am against having the pot shop down there, and the reason is because what we have in Cordova Outboard and Alaska Power Buildings, um we have influx of non-residents coming in the summertime that work in our canneries. And though we really appreciate them, because I don't want us to think we can do our fisheries without them. Um they do get into mischief, and mostly it's because of alcohol. And I can't imagine how that would be as aspirated with having marijuana also, marijuana also involved. We have a real hard time with booze getting broken into in the back of the shop with the bolts, which are people's livelihoods that we store for them. Um try to keep track, everything we have cameras, but things still happen, um taking joy rides in our vehicles. Uh and sometimes vehicles that we're working on, unfortunately. Uh that's, that's always, that actually has happened, but it's always a greater possibility. Um the things that we find out behind because of the nuisance, women, like I said, right now, a lot of it's alcohol and rightly substance, other substances as well. Um we find lots of garbage in the summertime out there. We find people might be living out there sometimes. Um we also, we find really gross things, we'll go to that, but um we we're just concerned about the level that that would increase in reading different things online uh with um pot dispensaries and what has happened in areas. Um what else I have? Uh crime and nuisance increased. Littering is a big, big thing. Um that would also increase. We just struggle with that. Uh the community things. I uh echo, I heard somebody say earlier about, I read something about the increase in emergency room visits. Uh can you support that? I have no, but I read um one instance online as a six point eight percent increase in emergency room visits when a pot dispensary has been established in the community, and that's pretty hot. We do have two homes back there that we try to have families in, and I I am concerned for that because that's definitely an issue. Or it can be with more increased nuisance out there. Uh. Unfortunately, that's, that's a thing we live with now, but I just think it is going to be a greater issue down if we have it there at that location. Um but like I said, I can appreciate new businesses coming to town. I can appreciate new buildings being put up. I just am having a struggle with avoiding one next to my business that could be a detriment to my businesses. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
So my name's Becky Chaffington. I am a resident of uh Cordova. And um I'm here to speak about the public hearing, which was only sent to people three hundred feet around, uh which uh is mostly the harbor and
You can't marry in that area.
Oh, sorry. Then I wanted to see your address. Oh, my address is P L off one vice four in Cordova. Okay, so the public uh hearing was sent only to people within uh three hundred feet of the lot to uh A block four. I feel as though that's a mistake uh in limiting the amount of uh decision is being made here for the entire community. The CMP preference is for selling marijuana in an area that allows retail uh stores and service shops of all nature, and that means that pot probably is qualified for that. However, more people are affected by these than the three hundred foot perimeter. A large part of that three hundred feet is boundary of the harbor and the parking area now, with businesses or individuals. Although marijuana is sold under the retail store qualification, I do not necessarily think all retail stores and service shops were created equal, nor are they all compatible neighbors. I bet many people would be just fine with small businesses, but uh however, I seriously doubt anybody in this room would raise their hand and uh say that they want to live next to a a pot shop. I personally implore the smell of marijuana and its byproducts. There are plenty of people using marijuana in Cordova, which is all good and well with me as long as I'm not forced to sit near them when they exhale. I don't want to live and work next door to a distributor. My building is eighteen feet from the front door to that shop. There are two living units and four businesses on my lot. And it's not that I want to be a bad neighbor to this. I just don't want to be a neighbor at all. And the city uh, the city for uh wants to prioritize this type of a business in Cordova. They should rent the old DMV space out to this dealer. It's that everything establishing this type of a retail store would be fabulous. There's good parking, it's strategically placed, it has a traffic flow and and a lot of walk-in possibilities. Plus, you don't even have to have a hearing. You can just take over the business. I'm not kidding, it's probably gonna get more money for the city if you want to rent that space to them than you're gonna get off the pot sales. As per the planning commission, you are not only expected to make and follow the rules as they are written, but you have to do something more important, which is um the more important than just following rules. You have to make sound, forward-thinking decisions about what is best for the city and its inhabitants. You must consider what benefit it is and what would come by allowing this. How many jobs does it create? What type of wages are paid? What sort of info- infrastructure and future does it bring to us? And do the customers benefit from patronizing this vendor? Just you as a shopkeeper, what goals has he identified for this business? What does, what are his credentials? These are all necessary questions to ask of someone who is going to set up a dispensary and wants to become part of our community. Uh if the board has deemed a pot shop a viable business in Cordova, what are the, what are the numbers for selling marijuana bringing to us? Where are the similar-sized cities in Alaska saying from revenue, how much money goes directly into benefit for the community? I'm told that already a very healthy homegrown marijuana industry is in Cordova. The mayor verified that and said that uh it is being uh uh it would be better to be a mainstream marijuana dispensary because the city doesn't could glean uh revenue from that sale. It sounds like we can't get tax revenue from the undergrounded people, so we're going to go uh mainstream. What was the, what would, what's the least that? Does Cordova think that the users will patronize both venues? Will they double up and use for twice as much marijuana? Why would people buy pot if they could um get it cheaper from the source? Maybe this new dealer and the people in Cordova would carry out the home growers and uh grow the shop. But it's all self-sustained. I believe that all this is jabber. It is a waste of time. Cordova wants to prosper or even remain viable as a community. These dispensaries, not the answer. We all realize that the only thing that anchors us to this uh rock is the fleet. We need to have uh more serious uh undertaking, supporting what's left of what's here in Cordova. Instead of looking for a miniscule kickback from Joe, maybe we should focus on attracting some sort of maritime support business for that lot. If we think about it, I bet the only about dozen, uh I think we all think about it. I bet there are dozens of folk businesses that are muted in Cordova that would be a better benefit to our community. Keep in mind that people moving here to a new community have a check lift. When they want the doctors, teachers, safe places, city employees, and et cetera. Very few people, I highly doubt very few people would put a marijuana dispensary down there, less of the top tens. So I encourage the city to redirect this time, this energy, and these resources to something will change their focus to some more cohesive plan that would benefit us as a maritime.
Thanks. Let's try to leave comments within three minutes so everyone has a chance to speak.
Hi, number Dan Curran. I live at one oh three Samuel Avenue. I want to thank the members of this planning commission. Your service takes time and commitment. I appreciate the fact that the decisions you make are gonna please everybody. I'm sure you're doing this work because you love Cordova and want the best for our town. I have that in common with you. I love my home of forty-plus years and the people who live here. I want our children to have a safe and happy place to grow up. One of the criteria for accepting the permit for the proposed marijuana store is that the use will not adversely affect the public's safety, health, or general welfare. My concerns for our young people, safety, health, and welfare. The state of Colorado was the first to legalize marijuana and fully embrace commercialism. The studies of the effects are revealing. Marijuana use by kids between the ages of twelve and seventeen is fifty-eight percent higher in Colorado than the national average. The two thousand fifteen Healthy Kids Colorado survey data shows that marijuana commercialization is associated with higher rates of youth use. Why does a retail store cause more use in teenagers? The study tells us that it is increased access and availability. Useable access via the gray and black market. And a decreased perception of harm. Decreased perception of disapproval and cultural normalization of marijuana use were listed. And in Anchorage, Alaska, the fall school semester of two thousand fifteen, soon after legalization, the Anchorage School District suspended sixty-nine students for marijuana use or possession. That same semester, the next year, the number doubled or jumped to ninety-seven. In the semester that just ended, a hundred and sixty-six students were suspended for pot. By opening marijuana shops all over town, society went from saying marijuana was transgressive to saying it was encouraged. Kids hear that, says Charles Warford in Anchorage, January two thousand eighteen. Some of the risks of marijuana use for youth include issues with attention, memory, and learning, poor education and life outcomes, reduced IQ for persistent heavy users, and increased risk of psychosis. The developing brain is more vulnerable to addiction. Marijuana is the number-one reason why adolescents seek substance-abuse treatment in the United States. If marijuana usage starts in adolescence, the chances of addiction increase to one in six. Usage by kids and young adults has markedly increased with retail marijuana sales. Marijuana is the number-one substance found in Colorado suicides ages ten through nineteen years. Um. Addiction. Maybe you're like me and have a family member or loved one who has drug addiction. If so, you will understand about divorces, failed relationships, broken homes, poverty-level living, failed employment, heartache of children caught in dysfunctional and unsafe conditions, emergency room visits, jail time, and the sheer waste of the personal talents of the human caught in addiction. This is a sobering thought. The profits for the marijuana industry rely on addiction. I encourage the members of the planning commission to use wisdom and to consider the use of Cordova and their safety, health as well here. Thank you.
Hello, uh my name is Brooks Fry, um six oh two Birch. Um here in Cordova, I teach at the high school in Health Future. Um the Alaska curriculum, uh the Alaska adopted curriculum for whole teaching, it teaches that risky behaviors are not healthy um for all of the reasons that we've heard. Um I'd also like to point out, and some I don't know all of those, but I'd also like to point out that, as I taught, I observed that the values of our youth uh that they adopt are taught by the adults in the community, not by curriculum. And so I'm concerned with the message that we're sending by allowing the pot shop. Um I appreciate all of the cited studies and statistics, and I think those are important. Um but I also came here to uh share with you a few names, former students. Um my first student that committed suicide by alcohol and marijuana use, his name was Derek. Uh that was in my third-year teaching in Alaska, uh years off the bat. Um one of my students that graduated, uh I married the mother of my students. They had three kids um before she um died of overindulgence, alcohol marijuana again. Um Carleen Ticket was the mother of one of my uh young students. He'll be graduating this year. Um but for the last seven years, he's lived with neither a father or a mother. Personally, he has caring family, but not parents. Um couple of coworkers uh were Eric, um who died of marijuana complications, and Tony and Ben, who uh were both my age or a little younger um living in rural Alaska, who both on and off battled addiction with marijuana and alcohol and both ultimately committed suicide, both leaving behind uh spouses and young children who were in school. Um all casualties of alcohol uh and weed, um harm those that they leave behind. Both alcohol and marijuana are depressants, um and so despite their recreational use, they definitely have um depressing effects on users. Addiction, of course, plays a part. Um and so my concern with having a pot shop here is the increased accessibility for all villages. Um even though it's obviously still illegal for uh youth and students, my students, um the increased accessibility for adult and for everyone is increased accessibility. And so as everyone else has already said, we can go ahead and expect to see that higher rate of use even among youth. And even if the youth don't protect, they're adversely affected um by the adult use in the community. Um living in other parts of rural Alaska, um I've been in villages that were dry, um bottled alcohol and marijuana that then turned uh turned to being wet, and so we allowed it. Um and both times that I'm familiar with, uh basically uh the immediate results that I saw as a school teacher were the sorry cries of the children about the adults in their lives that um that were not using. Um I, as a, as a coach and a teacher, I've been all over Alaska, um been to many, many uh rural villages and communities. Um and Cordova is by far um one of the health- one of the healthiest communities I have ever been to in Alaska. And that's one of the things I love about Cordova. And I hope we can keep it that way, which is why I would encourage the committee to to not allow pop shop in Cordova. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Chipman. I live at five twenty-three Second Street. Of the five twenty-three Second Street, who also own the Alaskan Hotel Bar Liquor Store. I just wanted, for the record, to say I'm not against a pop shop in Cordova. I am against the location of the one that they're proposing. I don't think they should be able to say that. Other than that, thanks for your time. And you need to invest in a three-minute timer.
Thank you, yes. Full strike, keep your comments, three minutes. Okay, the other?
My name is Dean Curran. I live at one oh three Sommel Avenue. This is a bad idea, putting a marijuana store in. In the long run, it will cause more trouble than it's worth. There will be more crime, more car accidents, and the police are busy enough with the drug problems we already have. It is a proven fact that it causes more homeless people who have to pay the marijuana-related emergency room visits when they can't pay. There are long-term health studies that show marijuana smoke contains fifty to seventy percent more carcinogenic hydrocarbons than tobacco smoke, which causes cancer. Marijuana is linked with depression, anxiety, and mental illness. This is not a healthy product. It'll make access to marijuana for TV watchers way easier. Just because marijuana use is legal, let's reject this store to protect our youth. Just remember, this is a drug and it is addictive.
My name is Matt Maxwell, seven oh one Fifth Street. I think, or I'm in favor of the marijuana establishment. I think it'll bring good revenue for the city. I would argue that regulation is safer than the black market because the black market is alive and well in Cordova. I think it'll dilute the black market and bring more revenue for, yeah, for the city. It's been legal in Alaska for eleven years and we'd be missing out on revenue. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to stick on in? Okay, hearing none. We can, are there any, anyone on the line? We have non-participation, no, I'm talking to this desk. Okay, then we can go ahead and adjourn the public hearing at seven oh three. And we can call to order the planning commission regular meeting at seven oh four. Start with the final call. Tonya Harrison, here. Mark Hall, here. Chris Mullin, absent. Sarah Trumpley, absent. Chris Reating, here. Gail Booty, here. Sean Denadell, here. That makes a quorum. We have approval of the agenda.
And Chair, I approve the agenda as it is. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hearing none, opposed, agenda approved. Approval of the consent calendar, record excuse absence of Chris Mullin from the September ninth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting.
Final Chair, I move to approve the consent calendar.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, approve your consent calendar. Any disclosures, conflicts of interest, or expectant communications? Hearing none, does not look like we have any correspondence. Do we have any of the guest speakers on the agenda? Audience comments regarding agenda items? Read it as per speaker. Please. You can pass around if you want. Thank you. Okay. Hello.
Hello, members of the Planning and Zone Commission. Tonight I'm speaking before you rest the, I'm Kristen Smith, five oh seven Fourth Street. And I'm speaking before you as the Executive Director of the Prince William Sound Economic Development District. We support economic development projects and infrastructure, housing with energy, mariculture, and workforce development for all the communities in the sound. And as an entity focused on economic development, we've been pursuing the vision of a shared seafood processing facility for the past five years. So this work started when I started with the Economic Development District in two thousand and twenty. We started looking into the research that needs to be done. So I imagine you've all heard some iteration of this idea and the functions it would serve over the past two decades, because it's an idea that's been talked about for quite a while. But we're talking about some shared seafood processing space, some cold storage, and ideally a community kitchen produced by small-scale food businesses and research and development work by seafood businesses, so folks who are wanting to develop seafood products. And so our work to date on this effort includes, starting in two thousand and twenty-one, we did, the commission did a demand analysis to assess annual demand in pounds of seafood processed. And that's estimated demand at about a hundred and twenty thousand pounds of seafood annually, which does not include kelp. That would peak during the salmon season at about twenty thousand pounds a month. Kelp is definitely anticipated to be part of the mix of seafood processed here at such a facility. And for reference, this year, kelp farmers just processed about thirty-seven thousand pounds in May and June of this year for Prince William Sound's first ever commercial seaweed harvest. And we do expect that to grow. Folks are, kelp farmers are just now putting out their lines and and I think next year's harvest is going to be closer to a hundred and forty thousand pounds, I would say. So that, like I said, we certainly expect that to grow. So we did the demand analysis. We've done a revenues and expenses projection that was done in two thousand and twenty-three. And we did a facility business plan in two thousand and twenty-four. And that's what I just distributed to you all, is the business plan. And and we are envisioning constructing a visible facility that would be like four thousand to forty-two hundred square feet and include shared processing space and cold storage. And so to date, our project partners have included the Copper River and Prince William Sound Marketing Association. CDFU has participated. The Marketing Association has contributed funds to support the planning work that we've done. The Native Village of Yak, which has also contributed funds, and also a lot of Prince William Sound kelp farmers. I realize there's a lot of interest in city property right now. And in the interest of developing a facility that has broad public benefit to multiple parties in our community, I'm requesting that the commission recommend having the city manager negotiate an agreement with the Prince William Sound Economic Development District for lease or purchase of lot two, block seven, Northville Development Park. Thanks, and I will step around to answer the questions if that's of interest or if needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience comments regarding the agenda items? Okay, planners report. Were there any questions for planners? Anything we'd love to add? No? All there, okay. So unfinished business, a new business. So we'll start with a letter of interest for lot two, block seven, Northville Development Park.
Madam Chair, I move to dispose of lot two, block seven, Northville Development Park, approximately eleven thousand five hundred thirty-four square feet in size, as outlined in municipal code, seven dot forty dot zero six zero B, by requesting big proposals to purchase or to purchase the property, actually. We discussed that, but.
So you're saying number, number two, or yours, okay, number four, parrot. Is there a second? Okay. Michelle, would you like to speak to your main?
Well, there were two people posing on this. And right now it's listed on the existing maps as leased. Is that lease expired officially?
And it's expired on November fourteenth, so, yeah.
We just haven't updated. My issue is because it's not been out there publicly that we need to have the public notice so people can get a chance to say, wait a minute, instead of going directly to somebody before anybody knows about it. And that has been a huge issue with the city council. And whatever we determine, even if it's in the best interest, always seems to get turned around and require proposals. And so that's the only reason. I know A-side wants more. They always want more. But I think it's a better use of the law of going with the mayors. But there's just, it's just not been out long enough on the public to know it was available. And there may be other businesses out there that can think of the same thing. So that's my comment on that.
Mr. Hall, you would like to speak for a second?
Yeah, I didn't know that it was.
Do you want to talk into your mic?
I wasn't, didn't want to see whether it was leased, you know, that it's always means we're great getting ahead of ourselves.
It's been discussed and so if it did, it's okay for us to put this out now. Yeah.
And the timeline then that goes out or offered?
So if it were to go out for RFP, you would have to make that decision at this meeting. And then it would go to the next city council meeting, then they would need to make that decision as well. And then we would need to crack the RFP, figure out what the sale price is or lease price. So it will take some time. It will definitely be sometime after November for sure. And then the RFP runs for thirty days and then we have to get proposals back. Then that has to come to the planning commission and then that has to go to the city council. And so it's, it's a process. It'll be into next year.
Any other comments? I think that puts us into next year's season. And for me, that sounds like we're giving people notice where we can put info out as much as possible and keep moving and maybe the people who are interested in that area can interact with each other over some kind of joint. But, yeah. Am I getting outside my scope here? I mean, I think the motion on floor is to request sealed proposals. So what we're saying is we are going to make the lot available to allow people to submit proposals to us. And then we will have to go through our process of ranking those proposals and making recommendations. Are there any other commissioner comments?
Yeah, I think I'm in favor of Commissioner Hall's idea of putting out a proposal, the fact that there are two applicants who are jumping on a property so soon after it's a house lease, does definitely indicate that there is a broad interest in the property. So I think that is good to see if there's any more applicants. Of the two I see in front of me, definitely the seafood processing center strikes me immediately as the more more favorable to me. I know that the the kelp farmers have been looking for that kind of facility for several years at this point. And definitely have a lot of room for expansion in that industry. So that would, in my opinion, that would be very useful to have for the community. But I would like to see if there are other people who are interested in that project.
Any other comments? Yep, I would intercurr. I think property is extremely valuable. So anytime we propose to sell it, it's good to see who's interested. Okay, all those in favor of disposal of lot two, block seven, Northville Development Park by requesting sealed proposals? Or is there purchase? Think about my saying, aye?
Aye.
And opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Okay, now we're on to letter of interest for a portion of lots eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, block thirty-two, original town site. H nine.
Madam Chair, I move to dispose of a portion of lots eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, block thirty-two, original town site, approximately seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty square feet in size, as outlined in municipal code, seven dot four zero dot oh six zero B, by negotiating an agreement with the party that submitted a letter of interest to lease or purchase property.
Seconded.
Hey, Mr. Hall, would you like to speak to your motion?
Unlike the last one, this one, this one has been on since well before I even moved here. It's been available and nobody's done anything. My only concern with this one is it's going to leave small remnants of the lots due to the rest of it, of that block. And I don't know if we can put it in this to have it contain all the portion of block thirty-two in the southeast of Ski Hill Road with a sixty-foot right away. Down below, you can see in front of the CDC or the Nana Farms there. The road is actually surveyed there. I found that, finally found that flat. And they've got a sixty, it's set back. And so these lines all need to move up a little bit because they don't line up. This is going to put a little tiny piece there that's not usable on that very corner. And it would just give them a little bit more room to build it, because they're going to lose a lot when they move it up. That would be my only suggestion, but I don't know if we can add that as a potential or do they have to request that?
So they only requested lot fourteen, thirteen, twelve, and eleven. So it would be, I guess, something that they would need to request. We'd have to look through the code and see what, what could be done there. Because in the note, it does say we can look at this property and see about root subdivision these lots in the survey to bring back the road. So
That ring would have to be part of the subdivision regardless.
Yeah.
If they wanted to do that. Because of the Because of the, the small size, the rest of the stuff north of the road.
Yeah.
That's big enough that we can ignore, we can, it can be a unsubdivided remainder.
I just don't know if this portion would be right of way that we would take um, for this roadway back in um, and then around. So uh, it would need further determination.
Right.
Yeah.
But they could come back and say.
And request more, more portions of lots, yeah.
And that might be something to be done before each to city council. If we move this around.
I mean, it seems like before anything really, I mean, this whole area is going to need to get surveyed, replanted.
Right.
Before anything can really happen.
Right.
Yeah.
So maybe that could be part of that process.
Yeah.
Definitely open for, for discussion and the applicant to bring it. So, yeah.
Really have to ask who we can refer back to.
So what we can really do right now is um, look at what they've requested.
Right.
And then go with that because this, they've seen these same um, maps.
Yeah.
And this is what they did request the applicant, so.
Yeah, actually mostly uses land, but it gives there lots more area which helps with the minimum lot sizes. They might be able to squeeze a third lot out of that. He just wants to get rid, you know, you shipped all that.
Yeah.
You're only going to get a little bit of thirteen and most of twelve and eleven. They're not.
So that's definitely something the applicant could come back and revisit in the future. Yeah. Yeah, put in another letter of interest for those other lots if they would um, wish to do so in the future. So.
I know that uh, if the city council wants to go out for proposals, then it would be. But that's up to them guys, or you know. So. Okay.
Would you like to speak to your second?
Um, yeah, no, I, I just, I like the idea of more housing out there. That's something that um, I've always really appreciated seeing uh, well, I've been on the commission. It's uh, more housing going in. Um, as, as to Commissioner Hall's comments, I, I think that is perfectly um, within the applicant's purview to um, request more land if they require it from a city land. Um, uh, this will all need to be um, uh, all of this land is marked as needing subdivision before disposal. So during that process, we can uh, yeah, I don't look further into that, I'm sure. But uh, yeah, no, just on, on its fair merits, I'm, I'm in favor of this proposal.
Any other commissioner comments?
I'm, I'm moving in supportive. Yeah, like they're good qualified builders and just excited to see more contractors working in town.
Likewise. And more developments, particularly of townhouse type housing. Not specified that these are going to be long-term residences, but I certainly would hope so. Um, okay, any further discussions? Okay, um, all those in favor of moving to dispose of a portion of lots eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, block thirty-two, original town site by negotiating an agreement with the party who submitted a letter of interest to Lisa Purchase, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Okay. Next is letter of interest for lots one and two, block five, Odeak Park subdivision.
Hi, I'm here. Uh, I move to dispose of lots one and two, block five, Odeak Park subdivision approximately uh, forty-five thousand five hundred, one hundred thirteen square feet in size as outlined in Cordoba municipal code seven point four zero point zero six zero B by negotiating an agreement with the party who submitted a letter of interest. Uh, uh, no, sorry. Uh, inviting sealed bids to Lisa Purchase property.
Are you looking for sealed bids or for RFP?
Uh, sealed bids.
Okay, start number two.
I'll sign with that.
Okay. Commissioner Hall, would you like to speak to your question?
Uh, again, yeah, I am always in favor of seeing new housing development um, in town. Um, uh, I think uh, either of the proposed, uh, either of the proposals are adequate for the process.
Either is letter of interest, yeah.
Letter of interest, yeah.
Okay, would you like to speak to your second?
And it goes back to the one down there. We've got two people already. Although these have been on the market for years, we've already got two applicants. So I think we have to go to at least bids.
Any other commissioner comments?
I, I think sealed bids are appropriate. I mean, someone that thought that the land is suitable. So if anybody else wanted to submit interest, they could have.
I guess it wasn't entirely clear to me from the letters. Um, what exactly would be built? They talk about the first letter. Um, says doing earthwork to make the land suitable for building, but it doesn't actually suggest making a building. And the second one just says for immediate development, but doesn't actually say what is committed to develop. So I guess I would wonder if requesting sealed proposals, we actually, what, what are people going to build here? Might make more sense rather than a sealed bid, but that's just throw that out there for discussion.
We would have to amend.
Mm-hmm. The motion, yeah.
Motion. And I don't think he can amend it. I think the guy can amend it.
Madam Chair, I move to amend the motion to request sealed uh, or RFPs. Request proposals.
Okay. So. Yeah. It's so, um, um, motion has been amended by Commissioner Daryl and seconded by Fumi to move to request sealed proposals. Um, any discussion on the amendment, the amendment as, or the motion as amended?
No, good catch. I mean, like, yeah, neither really state what their development plans are, you know. So I think we need to weigh in on what, you know, each are proposing before we issue.
You need to make a vote to amend the motion.
Okay, so all those in favor of amending the motion to uh, from sealed bids to sealed proposals, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, motion is amended. So now we can carry on, sorry.
Yeah, I just, good catch. I think uh, it would be appropriate for us to receive proposals from both of these parties and see what plans they have and then score.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I would agree that uh, I had not read those closely enough. Yeah, there's uh, yeah, I, I was just wanting to move forward quick, more quickly since these had been on. Um, if they hadn't been available for so much longer, that uh, no, I definitely would like to be aware of proposals.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of moving to dispose of lots uh, one and two, block five, Odeak Park subdivision um, by requesting sealed proposals, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Okay. Okay, last is conditional use, or not last, conditional use permit uh, for retail marijuana establishment.
So we, we took the comments on agenda items prior to this um, at the beginning of the meeting. So.
Oh, so I don't.
Yeah, you've been.
Speakers like the, the interests are telling you to asking questions.
No, that, that happened at the beginning of the meeting when we took discussion on agenda items.
Perfect.
There'll be an opportunity for audience comments afterwards.
But.
Yeah, yeah, there'll also be audience comments at the end of the meeting. So.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
I move to grant the conditional use permit for retail manual marijuana establishment requested submitted by A M W Property Management Company LLC.
Do we have a second? One second. Okay, Commissioner Hall, would you like to speak to your question?
I gotta throw my personal opinions on this out. I have to go with what the, the city codes and statutes and rules, regulations are. Um, it's legal in the state of Alaska. It's legal in Cordoba and we have rules for it. It meets the rules unfortunately. Um, we did, when I first got on this board, put one out of the road to the north and it fell through because, I don't know. Um, but we did approve a conditional use permit and it never burst and I think that was probably because there were issues with getting the lot here and I don't know all of the issues, but you know, once failed, we never heard anything. So I don't know what happened to that. Um, but we do have rules and regulations and they're, they're following those rules and um, Cordoba actually has a bigger setback than the state requires. Um, it's well outside of that. Um, and if Cordoba is going to allow them, if this is not an acceptable, there's, there's no, you know, we've got a criteria that says this is an acceptable location, even though I don't personally think it needs to be there, but it's, it's what the zoning is for and, but it requires a permit to get you know, approval so they can have a shop there. Um, and part of the thing is that there was a couple of the comments about the liquor store, what the liquor store was there from long before. Um, I even moved here and it, it failed. That lot has been closed for a couple of years now. You know, dilapidated. Now maybe the fisheries or Bayside could put in a go, go talk to developers because it's not city land and build something there. Um, I can see better uses of it, but nobody has moved forward and we have no control over what's done there other than hey, this one requires conditional use permit. This meets the criteria. That's the only reason why.
Should I speak to your second?
Yeah, it's the ah, I'm just happy to be here at this decision. But I think Cordoba has such an addiction problem in the youth. It's generations. Um, the last time I did a check on my friend group and I used like everybody I could think of who didn't use drugs and alcohol and I come up with seventy-five percent of people that I lived and grew with here having it more than one addiction problem, you know, it we have a problem that grows addiction. Marijuana is one of the symptoms. People go out and use marijuana to prevent and avoid uh, the circum, negative circumstances of their life. As far as I can tell, and it's already happening. I just grew to be a unguarded children being targeted for all kinds of addictions to be developed. Um, and if I had, if I had to move on, I would not be having any of these discussions. We wouldn't be having addiction problems or how we're going to deal with them. But I think uh, moving or we're doing away that we admit that it's happening anyway. This gives us some toehold on documenting the effects of our kids documenting if we have legal source that biologically can be traced to the people who are selling it in Harpey. And then they can be shut down if our kids are found in that system. Currently, we do not have any control besides parents and you know, churches and bars and after. So I would really like to figure out some way to uh, objectively document the effects of this stuff on our family. And I think this is one step towards that. One bite at the apple, really big bad apple. My, that's not it.
Any other commissioner comments? So.
I mean, I, I see both sides of this and um, yeah. I don't know. I, 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 I would like to abstain from weighing in on this topic specifically. Um, uh, yeah, I I see both sides.
I think without conflict of interest, we all have to vote.
We all have to vote, okay.
Okay, we all think of that discussion. That's, I mean, this is a difficult topic, right?
Yeah.
It's part of the problem, for example.
I'm just going to say to understand and council, that's vote.
Yeah.
Hmm.
I would be that great.
No. Thanks, Grushen.
Yeah. Just so you know.
Yeah.
I guess I, I will comment that um, so I do not use marijuana. I do not use alcohol. I do not use tobacco. I think do not like any of them. Um, I do, like, if, if we're bringing morals into it and not just going on the bear, is it legal? Does it fall within code? Could, is that why we allow it? If we're going into morals, I think that people do have the right to make their own decisions in regards to doing destructive things to their body, like, um, and I think that it is better to have a legal and regulated place to do that rather than doing it solely through black market um, arenas. Um, I definitely, you know, I've had friends and family who have had a who use drugs. who use drugs, some of whom have used them very successfully to uh, treat other things or just, you know, just a recreation, uh, some who have abused and had less and stellar, um, life outcomes because of it, but I do think that is within their right as people, um, so I I don't think, I don't necessarily think that Cordoba will be a better place with having more access to marijuana, and I don't know if there will be more access to marijuana from having a legal place to get it. Um, and I'm not sure if it really matters in that sense. But I, I do think that people do have the right to have access to it. So.
Um, I do wanna remind the commission that this is a quasi judicial, uh, decision that you're making tonight. Um, this is the final decision on the conditional use permit, and your decision needs to be based on law, facts, and rational judgment. On what's brought before you, if this conditional use meets that location requirements for the code and the law. So just keep that in mind.
You have a new, you got? I am to confirm, Commissioner Hall on this. Yeah, I think we've all, uh, it's, um, humbling to hear so many comments and opposition from the public. We had eleven objections and one in favor. But unfortunately, as, well, as pointed out, you know, we are here to make sure that this meets the code that is set forth in, um, by the city. And, um, I think that it certainly makes a lot more sense to be well within the bounds of the thousand-foot, uh, radius from the schools, um, and not for the federal requirements. And, um, yeah, same, anything to be fairly? No, there wasn't really anything that I could point to, to fault. That being said, it definitely, you know, has, it will impact it now. Without question. Don't know that it will reduce the non-legal means for marijuana to come into this town, because that would be a competition basis, but, um, perhaps. Is there any further discussion? One thing with the, um, residential side, which is not part of the conditional use permit at home, is that if discussed, I guess that'll get discussed, so.
It'll, it'll get discussed, um, if we need to perform a site plan review.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Um, in that case, all those in favor of granting the conditional use permit for retail marijuana establishment? Say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
One opposed, motion passes. Okay. Uh, capital agreement of projects. Okay, so this I think we can just discuss and then move, you know, the rest of it, so.
Yeah, and if there's anything you wanna change in there, then we'll, um, need to vote to amend it as we go through.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any, um, any discussion or changes? You are listed at one of the projects at some page for me.
The only issue I had was, um, the actual resolution, she has a statement, I don't know if it's in in our, in the background information. First of all, I noticed this, um, such a list should be arranged in order of preference with recommendations to which projects should be constructed, but here, does that mean just do we need to actually order these in priority or, because that was a question we had in the past years, and it was like, it was up to the, the planners and public works officer in the city to say, hey, we got money for this project, or you were finding money.
Yeah.
But it wasn't, hey, you have to fund money for this one first.
Yeah, um, so I think, you know, you give your resolution to the city council, then they come up with, um, projects that they can fund from this list, so it might be you the projects that are most important to the planning commission, uh, one through, uh, nine here, but it, to them, they might find funding or something that they can accomplish that's on your list, but you're just ordering them, this is the most important to the planning commission, so.
So we gave a lot of real, that's all I, I didn't see anything in here that wasn't important.
It's a little tricky to rank them like that, because they're so different, you have, it's like updating the codes is an entirely different project than Chase Avenue.
That's actually, yeah. That's a personal line, number one, but.
But it's also something that we're, we're gonna need money, you Chase Avenue.
Yeah.
There's a lot less involved in updating codes.
That's just the legal piece.
Yeah.
It's actually cheap.
And, and so it doesn't really, we might, we may end up being able to update codes before doing anything with for any of these other issues, so I guess I'm not entirely sure how the ranking would functionally work.
That's where I'm. Yeah. I was always under the impression, hey, these are things that need to be done. City council, figure it out.
And, and, and planner, and funding, and staff, and everything, I, I guess I would, um, I would agree with you, then. Ranking them doesn't make sense functionally, given that they're so different. And we're at quite different stages on a number of these as well.
I think that, um, I think this might come from the code requirement here that's, um, pulled out, so it just, I think that's why it says ranked, so if you're happy with the ranking as is, we can go with that, um, otherwise you can vote to amend, um, the ranking.
I mean, I guess what I'm saying is that the ranking doesn't really seem to have much functional purpose.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, it, it like we're, as long as everyone is under the, um, everyone's on the same page, the fact that we're not saying that this needs to happen before this other project.
Yeah.
As long as we're on the same page of that, then it doesn't really matter what the ranking is, but, um.
But it's not, we're only recommending.
Yeah.
So, do we have a motion to start this discussion?
Yeah.
I think we need to do one. Because this is a resolution, so we need, there.
You didn't have one, either.
Need your motion to approve the resolution?
Both.
And then we can have the discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we can, you can amend, just do a motion.
Have on your motion.
Oh, there it is. I'm going to approve resolution twenty-five dash zero three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, so who's, who's seconded?
All, all three of us.
Anyone?
Go ahead.
Okay, would you like to see your motion?
Um, yeah, no, uh, these projects, we've talked about them on and off, uh, for years and years now, um, they're all still important, they're all still things that we'd like to happen, so. And I don't see a pressing need to alter them overly much. Lots of other people disagree.
Would you like to speak to your second?
I think we were aware of these capital agreement projects, um, and we're not ready as like a city to really address them yet with funding, so. I think as soon as we start getting funding, we can start with on which of these is of importance, and uh, that may change which, which order it is, but, um, yeah, I don't know. I think leaving it as it is for now is fine.
Any other commission comments?
Maybe there are city attorneys and people who might prioritize things like that, have been doing marijuana stuff at the top, always why it's up there. But they get, they can adjust it according to input, right?
Well, this is, this is your resolution, you adjusted how you want it for the planning commission. So this is your, you're the commission, you make your own document of resolution of support, um, of this, so. Nobody else would be editing it.
I think what we're mainly looking for is, do these items on this list still meet our current needs then, or is there anything else that needed to be added, or are we unhappy, I mean, again, we've kind of established the order doesn't not really possible for us to order, but are we happy with submitting this as an order?
Uh, one thing that I was thinking might be worth adding was, uh, uh, I can't remember how long ago it was we were talking about it, but, uh, the, um, the shipyard, um, uh, infrastructure improvement, uh, did we want to add that on the list?
We've asked the resolution in support of the shipyard, uh, but that's definitely something we could, uh, visit, amending this list to include.
And because, uh, yeah, just to kind of keep that on the back burner.
Any discussion? This list gets updated every year, every year, but this one is just from twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, uh, it's, it's every year, so.
Okay, yeah. So if that's something that we want to add currently or add, make sure that it's on next year, um.
Yeah, it's certainly something I, I'd like to see on the list, I was wondering if everyone thought that would be an appropriate place to put it, but.
I think it's perfectly appropriate, um, we can add it, um.
That would we need to make an amendment?
Yeah, uh, uh, just see if you can like amend the list to include the shipyard, if, if everybody would like to do that, and then let's vote on it. Um, and then if it's a majority vote, we can amend to include that.
All those to have the shipyard to this, right, to.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, all those.
Did we, I mean, we've already discussed that the numerical order doesn't really matter, but do we want to decide where to put? Number ten?
Number nine, move right down. Code drops to the bottom.
Excellent.
So it's number, it would be number nine, if you are. Okay. Um, any further discussion on amending the motion? Okay, all those in favor of amending the motion? Okay, do we have any discussion on the, on the motion as amended? All those in favor of approving a resolution as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, okay. So we have approved the resolution, the C I S would be addition of, uh, shipyard development and number nine. Okay.
And then I'll edit this resolution, um, and then the way that it was, uh, put out, and then I'll maybe come in for it now.
Do we need any additional language in that, or is that fine, either force, force method for us?
Okay.
Uh, okay, see. Okay, we are on to, are there any audience comments? Yeah, and, yeah, I need working from up and, um, talk about anything now, so.
Uh, Derek, uh, my name is Brian Lashin, uh, owner of A M W, and then over here is, uh, also Alex Zerski, my business partner. Uh, we apologize to Bethel, uh, planning commission does things a little different, um, so we thought we were grading to the, uh, lineup and came up. Uh, we just wanted to come up here, uh, show updates to the name, um, show you who we are, uh, we came to Cordoba, uh, a little less than a year ago, kind of fell in love with it. Uh, we do want a, a shop out in Bethel where we grew up, and we've been operating it, uh, for three years. Um, which is the way that we think that we could, uh, come to Cordoba and possibly live here or spend some significant time, uh, both of us are, uh, active in the outdoors and absolutely love seeing, um, that's it. Thank you.
Any other commission comments? Or sorry, audience comments?
Thought I just got promoted. I'm still Mike Glover at Five Building Nerd Street. Uh, I wanted to start, I just appreciate and acknowledge y'all's discomfort in making vote, the clear moral ambiguity that I think many of you were feeling in that. I guess I wanted to say that just according to the criteria that are on page twenty-three, especially of the packet, I, I do think that y'all are allowed some personal discernment and wisdom as you make your decisions. Uh, point five specifically is given, I think intentionally vague, that the proposed use will not adversely affect to the public's safety, health, or general welfare, seems to allow a lot of room for discussion, discernment, and wisdom to take place there. Um, so I guess when votes where there is clear moral uneasiness and questions about how that might play and how you feel casting that vote, I would encourage y'all where there are future issues, where you have such clear moral concerns, to allow yourselves the permission to use discernment on what would be best for Cordoba. But I appreciate that it's not an easy decision for y'all, I think that was clear. Um, so I just wanted to, to say that for whenever it might come up in the future, I think y'all are in your position to exercise judgment and not just to be cold arbiters of what might, what the code might technically say, I think it gives you latitude to make those kind of decisions, so thank you again for your time.
Any other audience comments?
I'd like to, this is Becky Chavitt from Cordoba, Alaska, six oh eight Cedar Street. And, um, I had to welcome the new, uh, people who just came into Cordoba and fell in love with it. They've been here a year, and I wonder how much do you know about them? Do you know anything about them? Did you know what they're, what they're hoping to do here? Do you know how much money they're offering to the community? Do you know anything about it other than you? Do you know anything about it other than you better go down this and you better be doing by the law? So I think that was kind of hasty, there could have been a little bit more vetting that went on, I think it just was a slam dunk. And when I came here, I pretty much knew that's how it was gonna happen, but um. I think you had a hard job to do and uh you did it nice and quick.
Any other audience comments?
I wasn't gonna talk, but I'm gonna talk, Martha Nichols at six oh seven Alder Street. And I don't know, I don't know you two and you, and how many of you have children in school? You have any children in school, sir?
No, my wife is a fifth, sixth teacher.
Okay.
Yeah. And I voted no.
I I know, I know, I know, and the only one who has children is she's not voting, she can't vote, so. You're not really looking out for the youth of our town. We heard a lot of stuff about it tonight. Okay, and statistics and everything. And I'm really disappointed, really disappointed, but thank you, thank you for voting your way.
Any other audience comments? Hey, Gary, um pushing comments, go on the room. Start you, pushing, great.
Well, this was uh. I really did enjoy uh hearing uh all of the audience comments uh. Comments today, it definitely did uh. Yeah, it it uh definitely broadened the uh the discussion, I think, um. I do. It definitely was a a. Hard decision, I think, in in the. Uh the conditional use permit, okay, so I'm I'm glad that. Everyone did feel um. Uh did feel the need to uh discuss and think about it and. Yeah, I'm. I'm just glad that there are thoughtful members on the board who are. Uh yeah, well, we're able to do.
Any other?
Yeah, thank everybody for showing up and talking, giving your input. And thanks to members for sitting here, and I really appreciate everybody, you know, stepping up. Do something that's very easy to just. Say that because we don't have an active. Uh license operating. Is evidence that we don't have a problem. I think. We need to. Step up to it in very careful. Uh awareness. Cuz there are people who use um. They're wanting to relieve their cancer pay until then and then they die, and those people don't. But we shouldn't block their ability to have safe. Uh. Anything. That's legal. But I think having a dispensary improves the capacity for people to get something safe when they're vulnerable. If people are using it to safely party, I've seen people use this drug without a lot of. Big impact on their own lives. So those guys would have a safe way, it doesn't block them, they're already doing it. And the kids that are un. Uh monitored between school and all these changes, this will give us the capacity to. Monitor. If there are being added, I know there are already kids being added to the addiction product. This gives us a tiny. Uh control. In managing. And it's already expensive, the price of drugs, you know, calling addictions in our community, uh they're just. Yeah, I agree. So this helps us. Step up to that in a way. Uh do you, does the least amount of damage.
Pressure nailed.
I don't have any other. Closing comments. I would say thanks for the audience coming tonight and weighing in on, you know, what they wanna see in the community, I think that's. What we're here for, is listen to people, you know, hear what the community wants, so, yeah.
Would you hear our vice chairman?
Um my only thing would be. Because it's in our regulations. If people were really objected to it. It would be in our regulations and we, you know, if people wanna get rid of it, that's the way to do it, is to. Regulate it out, but I think a controlled use is better than the uncontrolled use that's going on right now. And um. There's now somebody who'll be accountable when there's problems. If there's problems, we have somebody to go to. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I also I think. Great to have uh this much participation from the community, um. And thank you Amanda for putting together the packet and all the information we had, it would definitely uh make it a lot easier to have these discussions. Um. Thank you for that. So thank you to the commission members for showing up and talking about difficult things. And with that.
That's your review journey, thanks.
Uh all those in favor of a journey at eight oh seven, alright, okay, we're adjourned.